So we open up tonight's meeting with a public hearing. The town of Littleton was awarded $12,000 from the Community Development Block Grant from the Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority to explore the feasibility of a cultural arts center to be located in the Littleton Opera House. And I will turn this over to Andrew.
So just wanted to briefly say that we did receive the $12,000 through the Community Development Block Grant. Also received an additional $5,000 of rich funds through NCIC's program. They were awarded from USDA CFTAT. Kate, can you explain that if there's any questions? We went through a competitive process to select an architect and work with the Cultural Arts Commission, the Littleton Cultural Arts Group, to work through some concepts, kind of plan for where the lower level of the Opera House goes, called the Cottage Street level.
Andrew, you can speak out, huh? We can hear you back there. Between the masks and the room, you can speak out.
Yeah, we probably should jump to this off too. I don't know.
But again, it's not a supplement here.
Yeah. There's a couple of things to do there.
That would be great.
So like, I'll just kind of talk this way a little bit, best I can. Yes, we went through, we were funded this project through two grant sources, Community Development Block Grant for $12,000, and $5,000 through NCIC's USDA CFTAT program. We looked through a competitive bidding process and reviewed architects, selected Dennis Myers Architects, which our contract with Dennis will conclude over probably the next month. We worked with the Littletons to select or create a cultural...
I'm just going to go turn on the mic.
Okay, I might be done later, so I'll hand it over to Dennis. Worked with the Littleton Select Org Commission, called the Cultural Arts Commission. It's not on yet. We're done. And our contract with Dennis will probably expire until the next month. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dennis, and he's following here to do a presentation. I think she's still turning that on. Wait.
Did you try it? Is that on now?
He's fastening. You still hearing?
Yeah.
I can try, if you'll let me lower my hat. I think that's projected, if that's what I can. It almost is every round.
Once you try it again, did you turn it on, the mic?
Yeah, it's on.
The mic's on.
But you already tested this one? Yeah, they should all work on here.
Also, Susan, could you turn off the air return?
Yes.
That'll probably help out quite a bit.
Okay, we're getting out. We also want the turn air. What I want to do tonight is take a few minutes, it's working very well, sorry. Is take a few minutes and walk through the conceptual plans we have. Then we're going to walk through, sort of a walkthrough computer model, three-dimensional model, to see how the spaces go together in three dimensions. And we also will have pictures at that time, and I would think the spaces might get utilized by people in different scenarios. So we were charged with looking at the Cottage Street floor of the Opera House as a cultural arts center. But as a cultural arts center, we sort of took a look at the whole building, because there's a lot of other cultural events that get programmed here. And we want to be able to support that with our Cottage Street plan and help enhance the use for the rest of the building. So this is the Cottage Street floor plan. As you know, we have the existing conditions. This is the existing conditions plan. As you can see, there are some masonry walls that still exist down there. The elevator continues down from where it is today, and we have the two egress stairwells at the south side of the building. It's mostly old with columns. Some columns are new, most of them are old and may be reinforced. And there's a number of infrastructure piping, conduits, some plumbing pipes, and some other things that we indicated by where they come down, and then columns and so on. So we really have a pretty clean slate to develop the program. So we met with a committee over a number of months and developed the proposed plan, which really enhances the entrance off of Cottage Street in the lower left-hand corner with a weather vestibule. And as you enter, you are looked directly into the lounge where we have a bar, which is used for catering, which is used to support pre-function meetings that will happen in our multipurpose space, the big box behind the bar. We're also anticipating opening up the south vaults and providing a deck so you can take advantage of the river and the south sun that is so nice during the day. So the primary multipurpose space we have is the big rectangular box in the middle of the building. It's designed to accept small performances, a comedian, a small music group. It can seat approximately 75 people in a theatrical or audience facing the front, kind of configuration. It can take tables and chairs, you might have a group of 45 to 50 in tables and chairs for more of a community meeting, or breakout meeting, or a corporate kind of meeting. So the idea was that it could also be an art gallery, and the walls are set up or displayed. The lighting is anticipated to light the walls as well as provide the theater light bars for the front of the hall. Behind it, there's a green room with some sink support for the performers. Big storage space on the right for the tables and chairs that'll be put away when there's standing room only or a art gallery situation. Then we have a number of multipurpose rooms. The one on the right here, well, let's go back to the entry. Immediately when you come in the entry, right to the left is a glass corner for a room we're calling the broadcast room. We've had a lot of discussions with the local radio station, and they won't abandon the site they're in, but they really see an opportunity to bring the broadcast piece over here, as well as a multipurpose room behind it, where they can record and interview people and bands that might be passing through and be able to set it up very quickly. They'll also, when they have more of a schedule situation, be able to record the performers in the multipurpose room. We're also looking at having them pick up, sort of the access and provide the access DVD aspect, which would also be able to be filmed more for us, or the recording studio. And you see there's a soundproof glass between the two rooms, so we could be observing the performance and recording at the same time. Toilet rooms are there to support the program, and we have another entrance to the multipurpose room immediately off the elevator, because not all folks will be coming in from Cottage Street. And we want to be able to provide things that support this larger hall. We anticipate a pre-function reception that could happen down there, or a program that actually happens up here, or it could be an after-event room where you retire downstairs, could be catered and set up with a bar there. So we see a lot of multipurpose activities going on here, and that'll enhance the ones you already have for the rest of the building. Let's just walk upstairs. The kitchen on the other side is an idea we're still testing in terms of its viability, but there's been a lot of interest to provide a community kitchen that will support our farmers market participants and help them grow their business and be able to market their products. So this is anticipated to be set up as a real commercial USDA-approved kind of kitchen. But we're still sort of testing the market and confirming the viability. So as we budgeted this thing, we built in some infrastructure, but there are a number of issues that we've identified as add alternates, depending on how we see the market shaping up. But we'll quickly look upstairs and just remind you that this is the floor we're on now with a big multipurpose auditorium. So this is pretty well spoken for, but the green room would remain, and the little room where the sink is might also be upgraded to support the performers, while the kitchenette and the green room downstairs can do a lot to enable us to maximize the use of these spaces for the performance upstairs. On the next floor, we have a room that is currently pretty much unfinished on the west wall, and we're proposing to use that as another multipurpose room, which could be used for practice by the performers or the big hall here, could be used as a conference room, a corporate meeting room. And right now, there's some exposed mechanicals in there, and we're showing sort of props off it to hide those and retain the arch windows that look to the west. So let's go down and walk through the model. These are some elevations of the entry to the building from Cottage Street, and where we show a, basically a marquee that shelters the entrance and provides advertising, and then a plaque banner that runs up the side of the building since we're sort of on the south entrance to Littleton from the highway. And as you cross the bridge, the idea would be to identify that as a major cultural resource and welcome visitors to Littleton and the Opera House. We're also showing this deck built out to the south, so you can overlook the river with a small canopy to shelter the doors and pick up some of the articulation of the canvases and the brackets you have on the existing building. Let's take a quick walk through the model and try and get a feel for the space we're creating downstairs, since the ceiling heights are sort of limited. But we anticipate coming across the bridge and coming into this entry off Cottage Street through the airlock vestibule into the lobby lounge reception. So once you come in, you sort of see everything that's available. The broadcast booth to the left, the reception person for the back wall there would be the activities that are scheduled for the coming weeks, what's currently playing, and then out toward the lounge and the over the river and the deck. So generally, the thought is that the ceiling will remain exposed but dark. All the pipes and everything will continue to be up there. The lighting will be largely focused down. And then as we walk out to the deck, where it overlooks the river, and people coming from town can see the activities that's happening on the deck, and even look through those windows and see what's going on inside. We use a little ceiling cloud over the bar to provide the focus of lighting for that area. And then as we go into the multipurpose room, we have the theater lights up towards the front, and all the walls have their individual LED light track lights, and we're just suggesting displays around the river. Maybe we should walk out through the side door. This is the back green room, where the fire service entrance is, the electrical service is, and so on. Let's go out by the elevator. So this is the side entrance to the multipurpose room as you get off our elevator here to the left. And then if we continue, our bathrooms are on the right. And if we go further west to our multipurpose room, this is where the flexible room is that can support our broadcast studio. And if we, there's our window where the soundboard will be on the other side. And then our broadcast studio will be a person behind the window most times of day and welcome the teenagers that come by after school and hang out and do their homework or whatever. So what do we have for pictures? Do we, if you want to tell someone else? So this is sort of the view we see, let's see, when was this? In the middle of summer in July or something. We're trying to get the right, is that a right? There we go. So this is coming in from the south. Actually, this is one where our add alternates. Let's see, let's look at the animated picture, and then we'll come back to this. Here we go. So this is when we come in the entry, and this may not be the actual final colors or anything, but they're used to sort of show the volumes and so on in this particular picture. But this is a little reception ticket booth, whatever, with the list of activities on that back wall, where the geometric shapes are in this picture. But you can almost, you know, have these windows suck you into the lobby and the deck and so on, so then it becomes a real active kind of space. This is looking through our window from the broadcast booth to the multipurpose room behind it. And this is a multipurpose room with a lot of multipurpose things going on in there, just to give you an idea of how things might work. So there we found the budget. So one of the things we're doing is we're continuing to negotiate, to negotiate with the state Historic Preservation Officer. As most of you know, this building has historic easements both inside and outside. And so we're continuing to work with them on the details and how some of these new windows to the south are going to be articulated. We're also working with them on the deck and just what, how that can happen. But we've set up the design and the budget to build that deck independent of the building, and so if it had to be removed at some point in the future, good. And the same is true of the marquee and banner sign. So we've developed the budget, we're cutting off the left side a little bit. But in any case, we developed a construction budget, working with, on a page, it's still a construction manager, to develop the base bid. The base bid is all the interior work we saw on Cottage Street level, with some of the infrastructure to support these alternatives. One alternative is developing the kitchen to its whole extent, the other is the exterior deck, the other is just finishing the upstairs multipurpose room that we identified. And then the marquee and the blade allowance. So those are the construction numbers, and to that, we've added an owner's contingency at this point in the project, because we're not sure when we'll go get this thing. And there'll be some refinements as we go from these conceptual drawings to construction documents. There's architectural engineering fees to take this concept to construction documents, from which you can build, it would have the detailed structural and architectural documents developed in detail. There's an FFME allowance. FFME is fixtures, furniture, and equipment. This is the loose stuff that we anticipate, the tables and chairs, the signage, the actual signage that goes on the marquee and so on, which is why you see a larger number for that over in the marquee column. And then there's some expenses it takes to do some testing, independent testing during construction and things like that, for a total project cost. So if we were to look at the base building, the total project cost is somewhere near 1.7, and if we add all the alternates, we're up about 2.4. These are preliminary budgets, and we haven't fully defined, but I think they're realistic for the scope we're anticipating, considering the other issues we add to the hard construction number to develop the total project cost. So we have a couple of views of the building without some of these add alternates, and that was formed the basis for helping us part of those issues. So this is the building with the openings in the wall, but no deck and no marquee and no blades on. And there's various combinations of those. We could do the deck, we could do no marquee, we could do the marquee and the deck, no blades on. And so we're looking at those alternatives and using these images and other alternatives to complete the negotiation with the Historic Preservation Officer. So I think I've taken more time, and there was a lot of, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but it's a progress report from our end, and we're excited about its potential. Anything else, Andrew, I should go?
I don't know, just maybe if there's any questions.
Dennis, I, you probably said it, but just from my understanding, there are two forms of egress. One of them would be the deck, and then one of them would be at the Cottage Street level. We're talking minus the elevator, is that correct?
Right.
All right, and what is the total space? You said that one room was rated for 75 people. Is that maximum for the whole space, or just that floor?
The whole space could pay approximately, it's about 150, if everything was still.
Okay. Good, thank you. Are there any other, any other questions for?
Where does money come from?
Caitlin from NCIC is here, and I don't know if it would be, you know, premature to talk about some of the alternative funding sources that could be pursued.
Okay, let's see if there's anything else in particular to the structure or the design or whatever, and then we can jump to the financing. That way you could answer, would that be okay? Any other questions for the design, structure? Okay.
What are the questionable things about the community kitchen, would you say, specifically? Could you hear me?
I can't.
Sorry.
Sorry.
What are some of the questionable constituents for the commercial kitchen, like they're not sure of?
The question was regarding, you know, what are some of the things we want to confirm to be sure the kitchen happens? Is that fair? The kitchen is a pretty significant investment, and we're just trying to be sure there's a market for the investment. And there's a lot of interest on the part of a number of the farmers market folks, but we seem to see some other venues that are being used, and we just want to be sure there's enough to stay in the building there. And maybe, you know, a factor being altered that could be fit out later in the process once we get a feel for how the whole building's working, how the rest of the floor is working, and, you know, we have the good manager of the building and the scheduling and all of those things. So we're just trying to, we've done some, you know, informal surveys and talked to a number of people that participated in the farmers market, and there may be other aspects, and a certain service catering could do a lot of other things. But, you know, the viability of that is to whom it isn't fully confirmed at the moment, certainly possible, but definitely over time.
Andrew. And Dennis, if I can just say, we've already had calls at the office for people who now do their businesses from their home, they're making cupcakes or making candy, and they are interested in using this space, so it would be like a community kitchen. It wouldn't just be for the farmers market, it would be for anyone that has a home business that has, you know, increased in volume, and we could offer this for rent to those people.
And if I can add to that, as being on the board of the COOP in town here, one of the things that we have seen is that the local market has done so well through this COVID time, so, you know, investing in those people and their work at home is going to be important, I think.
And we talked about trying to do a commercial kitchen in the space that we put the prep kitchen in, and we couldn't do it there. So in order to market this more for venue use, you really do need a commercial kitchen. You know, the prep kitchen has worked, because some caterers will bring in their warm ovens and things like that, but the majority of people want to have a kitchen. And so that's another point that could be added to a contract for a price of rental. You know, if you're going to use the kitchen, then this is the price for that. So there's a lot of possibilities for revenue for the Opera House. And if anybody at any time, I don't know if this is okay with Andrew and Carrie, but if anybody wanted to go downstairs and view that floor, Adam, the new manager, and myself, I'll be hanging around a little bit, would be willing to give you a tour of that floor. Great, thank you. Any other questions as far as, is this finance related, Bruce, or building related?
It's technical related question.
Okay. Great.
One, I ask where the money comes from. Second thing on it is, what I'm hearing and what you're doing here, putting in competition with other buildings we have for other businesses in town. I think, is this town doing it? Is it you, as a private company, is doing it? Are you going to be able to pay the rent? Or are we in competition with putting our little local shop out there? But I think there's a lot more to this that you need to ask a lot of questions, rather than just coming up with, this is a grandiose, nice thing, you do. But when you've got other people that are trying to make a living out here, you've got to take that into consideration. That's number one. Secondly, I'm asking where the money comes from?
Okay, we're gonna, well, we're gonna get to that. Caitlin is... Caitlin is here, and she's going to address that, Bruce.
And Bruce, I can answer a little of that question as far as hiring another business that has this type of service available. Just from talking to people, there is no other service for like a community kitchen. We want to help the small business people too. And the farmers from the farmers market. Anyone who is looking for, you know, has a home business, but looking for a space where they can produce their product. And we also, in that respect, can gain more revenue for the offer house. It's a, you know, it helps everyone, really. That's my opinion.
And I can add to that, too. The Northern Country Consortium was talking about wanting to do school programs in this cultural arts center. So that's also something that helps the youth and give them some activities, something to do up here. It's, you know, a little different. Getting them into the kitchen or the recording studio, things like that.
If anyone wants to mind when we talk, just let me know.
So do we want to...
Yeah, Caitlin, would you mind just to talk about... I mean, we usually go after a number of different alternative funding sources for any projects that we do. And NCIC has been a pretty strong partner with us since, I think, 2015. And with Caitlin here, and if you don't mind, I mean...
Sure. So I work for Northern Community and Corporation. We've worked together for a number of years. We're a non-profit community and a non-profit organization. So ours...
I don't know. We're running back, so take that.
So one of our services that we provide to communities and nonprofits is to help identify funding resources. Often those are coming from local, state, and the federal government, as well as being matched with funds from private donors, individual businesses, as well as sometimes bonds or appropriations from the town. So the town built in, you know, as an example, the Riverfront Commons Project, that's about a $1.5 million project that has about six different sources of funds that are going into that project to make it a reality. And that's one of the strengths of town is being able to leverage those resources. A $1.7 million rice pack sounds high, but when you're able to chip away at that here and there with those grants, you know, it ends up being a fraction of the cost of the town. You know, the town's just willing to have one of those things again. There are certainly, with the cultural arts center, we're talking about local foods, there are millions of dollars out there for these types of projects. And it's working together as a community and with the town and the nonprofit partners to get our hands on some of those funds. So I certainly think it's realistic. It's not something that happens overnight. It is a concentrated effort. I expect to see these renovations tomorrow, but certainly I do want to...
Yeah. And just to Caitlin touched on, just to give an example of like... To give an example, yeah, there we go. On the Riverfront Commons Project, the taxpayers put in $175,000 towards the $1.5 million project. We received another $140,000 in private donations from a handful of local residents.
155.
155. And we've also been able to provide all of that leverage, the rest of the money. We have 575,000 in CDFA tax credits, 110,000 in the trail program, or, I'm sorry, those Northern Borders, another 200,000 through the Landmark Conservation Fund, and on and on. And so basically, our method has been to take seed money from the taxpayers and then leverage it into, you know, three to one or four to one within with grant money.
Other questions for Dennis, for Caitlin? We are over our time as far as public hearing, but I guess we could... Are we going to ask for any sort of motion or...
No, motion required.
No motion required, okay. There was a request, too, and thank you, that we should be wiping down the mic staff.
That's what I have.
So we do have...
I'm going to give someone one of the mic. I will wipe it down.
Thank you, Sue.
That's okay.
Just be extra careful. Dennis, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Me, too.
Before we get to some introductions, I do want to give a big shout out to the Hadlock Group Insurance for sponsoring the meters so that we can shop without having to pay. We shop on Main Street and Mill Street without having to pay. So a big shout out to Hadlock Group Insurance. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next order of business is some introductions. We... Andrew, do you want to introduce our new fire chief?
Yes, yep. Just a second here. Maybe I should just keep you in this and actually work with you.
I'll come here.
Okay. I have one here. So I'd like to introduce our new fire chief, Chief Michael McQuillan. Michael McQuillan is a well-educated and highly experienced leader in the fire service that has routinely demonstrated excellence. He has demonstrated a steady history with the Lontany Fire Department, where he had advanced professionally as battalion chief of operations. In that executive level position, Mike has demonstrated a high level of leadership and management in an administrative role, as well as a keen understanding of those engaged in firefighting and emergency medical service delivery. This was a long and well-rounded process. And I thank the community for its patience in filling this critical position. We're looking forward to continued collaboration for the success of the organization and to support the community. And with that, I don't know if Chief, you want to raise your hand? Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. I look forward to meeting people. You'll see more of me in the coming months. I'll be out in the community. And I encourage, if anybody has any questions, concerns, comments, feel free to come to the firehouse, give me a call, email me. I'm going to try to do some cable access events and stuff to get my contact information out there to you. But I'm here to serve you along with the fire rescue department. So thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And also just like to thank Captain Miller and the fire department for, you know, during this time, really stepping up and help keep the transition and keep the fire department running. Well, we have a full-time chief, so thank you.
So the next is the introduction of our new fleet mechanic, a town fleet mechanic.
So I think our public works started.
Good evening. I'm Doug Amco, Home Works Director. And tonight I'd like to introduce Bruce Russell. He's turned on as our fleet maintenance manager and new mechanic. And he's been on with us for six weeks now. Bruce is a Littleton native. And he's lived around this area in a number of different places. But for a while, he lived on Dodge Road up off Slaybridge. In his teen years, and that's when he started his interest in mechanic work and learning those skills. He graduated from Profile High School, top of his class. Then he went on to Denver Auto Diesel College, where he also graduated, top of his class. And so then he came back to Greenwood in the West Lebanon area and worked for some dealerships, including John Beer and Cat. And then he went up for a construction company in Woodville and ran their equipment service department. So he's got his certifications there and started learning the business for maintaining equipment. And then he decided to step out of his own business. And so he's been doing that for the last 25 years, which he's worked for a number of large construction companies and glad to have experience with them as a mechanic. So we're very proud and we'd like to have him up for the highway department and the town of Littleton. Thanks, Bruce.
Bruce, do one, Mike, up.
Thank you, everybody, coming out tonight. And just glad to be a part of the team and on the force of the town to pick up the pieces and keep the fleet up to par and looking on the long-term plan here to longevity on the equipment and updates and everything. So glad to be a part of the process here.
Welcome.
And I could just add one thing. This is really a change in the direction in the way that we handle equipment mechanics. It's really the first step in getting into a fleet mechanics program. And really, we need to thank the expertise of Roger Emerson on our board. Really, we, you know, he had the insight to take a look at it from a different perspective when the mechanic position came up and to really look at, you know, how could we start to think about things in a more holistic way in doing that. And Roger worked together to create this new fleet management role that's more of a senior-level mechanic. And I think we're already starting to see some pretty impressive results. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so next is the on-off ramp lighting.
Yeah, so Caitlin, the microphones are taking them a notch for our...
Yeah. Do you want to... Did you want to introduce Adam?
You can introduce Adam, too, while he's here. We've done a previous meeting, I believe, but...
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. I just didn't know. I didn't know if there was more people here that you'd want to introduce him.
Yeah, Adam's our new offer house manager. As Sue's retiring at the end of this month, he's going to stay on and in an operations advisory kind of capacity, I believe. But Adam takes over the reins on January first. So we're really excited to have him. He comes to us with a background in marketing, events, arts, music. And I think he's going to have a lot to offer for the community.
Just want to make sure everybody knows he's the new man.
Very nice to meet everybody. I know we did this once before in the last month, but a lot more faces at this one. So equally nice to meet everybody again. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. So on-off ramp lighting. So I just briefly talked about it when I turned it over. Chief Smith might have a little more to add. So concerns have been described as a result of a decision by the New Hampshire Department of Transportation to cut expenses by eliminating funding for on and off ramps on state highway intersections for the lighting. I requested assistance from our local representative slash senator, Aaron Hennessy, to review the possibility with the DMC of potentially reinstating some of those monies into the budget. After my meeting with her a week or so ago, we discovered it was unlikely that a decision was going to be made to put these funds back in the budget because it's a statewide decision. And they're not going to... They're unlikely to select certain communities that they would put lights back on. There is a safety procedure that that can happen. But again, it's highly unlikely. I don't think it'll leak the state's guidelines for the safety review. So I've been looking at the cost. It looks like the cost is roughly $3,000. This would be to turn on on-off ramps. And, you know, if you think about intersections like St. John's Ferry Road and North Littleton Road, which are pretty dark. And so basically, what I'm requesting of the board would after Chief gives a little bit of talk maybe about safety concerns, is just that we would consider putting the roughly $3,000 into the proposed budget to the town to cover the cost of Littleton Water and Light to turn the lights on. But Chief Smith, as probably, as part of our traffic safety committee, might have some insight into the safety concerns in these locations.
I can say that we have received numerous complaints about the on-off ramp specifically by the hospital. It's dark as a pocket out there. And, you know, people are not comfortable with it being that dark. I know there are some newer crossings or more efficient crossings at exit 42. And, you know, the big picture is the state didn't consider, in my opinion, the safety component of eliminating lighting. It was strictly a budgetary issue. I never saw any data from the state that said what the cone distance was from each light and how one particular light at what particular location would provide sufficient lighting for the off-ramp. And essentially, what the state did is they downshifted the cost to each community and washed their hands of it and said, we saved money, and made it a community decision whether or not to illuminate each particular road or off-ramp. Unfortunately, there really isn't a lot of crash data that would... that could, that I could bring to you to say, hey, we've had an increase of 20% of crashes at these particular locations. It's just, it's not part of the uniform crash incident report that we fill out that would indicate that these particular locations, lighting was a... these traffic lights were a specific issue. But I would recommend that you, based on the verbal complaints that we've received over the years, that you place that money back into the budget.
So question I have, there are 23 of those between exit 41 and 44. Are we talking about turning them all on and it'd be at the cost of $3,000 to have them all turned back on?
If that was what the numbers were given to you by water and light, I would assume... Because they're water and light poles. There are poles, if I'm not correct. Because we've had some knocked down. And Littleton Water and Light will put them back up. But I would assume that...
It was under $4,000, the board would agree.
For all 23, do we turn it back on?
Yes. That's per year. Adds up over time.
So do we... Are you looking for...
Yeah. You could have taken that advice.
If it's $3,000 or $4,000, how about looking at, it says, operate somehow by cutting $3,000 or $4,000 out of your budget if you want your light. How is that, it says you've got a lot of things to replace, a five, a whole bunch of different things around that you might be able to cut, town offices, but I think you should be saying, if you're going to put it on here to increase it by $3,000 or $4,000, you should be looking to say, here's what we're going to do. And we're going to cut $3,000 or $4,000, maybe town managers, salaries, I don't know. A consequence link. Something like that, how about where you cut stuff in here to compensate for what's left. And that's what you should be looking for. It's not just increasing the expense. And you should be looking to say, if you're going to do it, we're going to put it on there. Here's how you do it. Try to cut it back out, you know, compensate for it.
I think Chief brings up a good point. What value would you put on the light if there was a crash there? And it was a failure?
Well, I'm asking, the value is fine. Not after that. I'm saying, if you had something else on you, you cut something off to compensate for it. Cut back, stop the spending. Littleton's very much into the biggest spending town. Everything's put on here within the habit of spending where it stands. And I think you're going to look at it as if you're going to put something else on, do it. Look at it as what can be paid off after you compensate for it.
Do you have any questions, Roger? Anybody else have any questions in court on that? We'll take that under advisor members and look into that.
Yeah, next up, I just had on my, on my report, are we still... I just had Eaton parcel proposals. So, you know, I put on here, I knew that it was reviewed at the last meeting, and presented by an advisory panel that I had reviewed the proposals coming in for myself. And I think at this point, just thinking about the timeline for either town meeting or RSA 4114A, or, you know, it's been talked about, you know, potential of establishing some kind of a committee to review the parcel itself and any concepts to do forward and/or to do nothing. And really just looking for direction as to what's the next... And really just looking for direction as to what's the next phase to be for Eaton parcel.
I think that's what we had decided at the last meeting, that we would like to put a group together, a committee. There were a lot of people that had shared concerns at the last meeting, so we thought the best thing to do would be to do that. And would it be appropriate to put it out there that if people are interested in being on that committee, to write to us?
What we could do is, do we could do an announcement like we do for any of the other commissions when there's vacancies and post it up online and try to get out some papers? And you got a number of mine?
I think it needs to be a pretty good chunk of the community, 10A, just to get both sides of the story.
Because I'm kind of new to this, can you please explain to me what this committee's going to be doing? Can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. It'll be hopefully made up of many different folks of the community to decide what is the highest and best use of the Eaton property. Does that make sense?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
That's why I'm here.
Sure.
Good.
How many did you say would be on the committee?
Well, that's what we're trying to decide. It probably...
I think 10 would be enough.
Clear enough, it's a thousand. Plus, we know...
More than 10 would be on the committee. Right. Probably what we ought to do is just kind of think that through because we'd like to have even maybe the department heads on there or some input from the butters, input from the Conservation Commission, maybe input from even developers in the area, but to have a good cross-mix of that.
Input from all the people that live around there and most of the people that are here today.
Karen, I have a question. How did it happen that this meeting came up? I'm asking simply because when Stephanie gave the budget price to the town so that the land would be owned by the town, not the worst luck man, anybody, because she wanted it to be for recreational use. She stood in my garden, which was her garden, and she said that it was to be in perpetuity for smallville trails and hunting trails and stuff. So, yes, because I'm kind of a, you know, I haven't heard, what is going on that there's this push, you know, I can ask, what is happening that there's this interest in selling it or building it up or anything when it was given to the town for the budget price of $103,000, land worth millions? Did you tell me that so I don't feel so in the dark?
Sure. No, and it's a very good question. We and Andrew Chimean or Roger, Chad Chimean, do you want to...
Sure. I mean, so, you know, we just looked at some of the original documents and, you know, what we could see was that the parcel was sold to the town, what probably was market value at the time without any deep restrictions on it. The intention was for the town to use it as a recreation, and I believe it was recreation deals. It was determined at the time that that's not a viable option, just due to the terrain and location. I think there was some time later, I'm kind of summarizing, it was kind of looked at to be potentially a space for the new schools, for a new bike-plate elementary school. After looking at the site, again, the school, whoever else was involved at the time determined that this was not a great location for that either. You know, over the past, and then how this came up really, over the past, you know, four years, I've worked on commercial development and the planning board and other places, including the recently released master plan, there's been discussion of what to do, why aren't we doing, dealing with the housing crisis? Why aren't we starting to expand housing for Littleton and doing something? And so, another thing that the school brought up at several meetings, you know, basically blaming me for not selling the Eaton parcel or coming over the plan saying the school didn't ask because the town hasn't resolved what to do with the Eaton parcel. So, seeing an opportunity to try to address or at least get a community dialogue going, we created a RFP. The RFP was built in such a way that...
What was the RFP's deal for?
A request for proposal. So, it was a request for proposal to be submitted by potential developers. The purpose of the RFP, the way it's drafted, reviewed by the select board, approved or released, was to, you know, establish a process that would start a public dialogue, but then also enable developers who had the capacity financially, professionally, and experience to come in and show a proposal that they could actually commit to. The benefits of Eaton parcel or that kind of thing were its connection to public infrastructure, sewer, water, electricity, roads, also its location, and also the ability to generate a significant amount of tax revenue pretty quickly. And we announced it. So, once that was put out, we received three bids. Two bids were considered non-responsive, meaning they didn't submit the information that was required, like bank statements and that sort of thing. One developer submitted a proposal that met the requirements, was a commitment to purchase and develop. Once that, those proposals were in, there's a process that the select board has an option to use, which is RSA 4114A. So, learning RSA 4114A provides for a public dialogue before the sale or purchase of the property. The process involves having information presented to the Conservation Commission and Planning Board separately, and then they get to issue pending letters to the board. I planned on going to those to present the information we had, but unfortunately, they have to help issue. Then after that, and if the board chose to go with that process, there's a requirement of two public hearings where the public will be involved in a discussion, and then after that, a separate third of the board. The town then has the ability to petition the board so that it's included on a foreign article. But that's basically the process I wanted to put.
Because it's not, it's not any one of these lands, it was given to the town with the idea that the town people couldn't do it.
Yeah, it wasn't given, it was purchased, it was purchased at market price without any restrictions, the intent. I don't know what the discussions were back then, I know some people know the owner, but it was not related in any way in the deed. There's no restrictions, I think.
I'll get over here so I can address everybody. Can you hear me in the back?
Yes.
Can you hear me in the choir?
Yes.
I know why a lot of people are here tonight, and it has to do with Eaton property. And the town manager is very right, when they had Stephanie sell them the land and she put a signature on it, she had no restrictions on it. That's the legal bottom line. Two weeks ago, we met here and discussed this issue, and in the past two weeks, the Conservation Commission or some of its members have met to talk about this and have walked the property. Has anyone else walked the whole property? Has anyone out there walked the whole property?
Probably, yeah.
The whole property, morning to morning to morning to morning. We've got extremes that we understand can go. It can go from being left as open space, 103 acres, with all the benefits that that might provide, to being dug up and developed with the plan that was, that possibly can be accepted and all the benefits that that might provide. I've spent my whole life in the forest industry. I came out of university, maybe in 1969. In fact, one of the classes I took was public speaking, and I thought, why am I going to need to take this class? And they said there were four S's for public speaking. Stand up, speak up. Don't want the little boy to get this wrong. Know when to shut up and sit down. Sometimes I have a problem with the third. Anyway, you walked the property, so looking at it as a woodlot, 103 acres is not anything too big to be a town park. You need a certain number of acres unfragmented, and this is what's killing all open spaces, fragmenting it, picking a little piece here and a little piece there and putting it on a little suburb. And you need the 103 if you're going to see all the dynamics that we saw that other day on Saturday on the walk. We've got stands of oak and beet with tremendous hard mass, with a wildlife, the deer sign in that, up at that corner, behind the barren bean's old turkey farm, which is now, that teller, that teller is incredible. Once you step right in that, the plan involves 35 acres, the top of the piece, well, I can tell you what's at the top of the piece in the northeast corner. You might float them open there, but that's about it. That's why that probably was set aside as that piece. I don't mean some bias, but how can I not? I did a little math on what those buildings are going to be, and if you looked at all those buildings, the numbers of buildings in there. I took an estimate of roof pitches and roof areas and everything. The roof area is on that belt when it's all done will be 16 acres. That's 12 football fields. Dumping water, ah, putting out this whole thing, we would be managing as a forest for wildlife, water, recreation, some timber. That whole piece right now is a living sponge, and all the people that live downstream from that, on Richmond Street, know your backyards, and it's all because of the trees and the forest are absorbing all that water. If you use very conservative figures of what they might put for residents into that place, you can come up with 1,500 residents. The population of Littleton in 1960 was 5,003. Population in 2018, 58 years later, is 5,895. We gained 892 people in 58 years, and well, we're going to housing for 1,500 people. So, the growth, that was a growth from in 58 years of 18% down low. And by the way, the last two years, the growth is negative, negative 1% for the population. 18% in 58 years, that's 0.3% a year. That's about what you might get on a good running back these days. 0.3% a year. If you take the 0.3% and you look at what they want to increase for a population, it comes up 90 years, 90 more years. So, I think a lot of this information that has come in on this proposal fitted the format. I mean, if you're a smart student, you figure out what your teacher wants for an answer, and that's what you give them. This developer, doing his job, did a good job, he filled in all the lines, and he showed something, showed a tremendous amount of possible tax revenue coming to this town. If you do your homework, you'll find out that there's different kinds of tax revenue that come to the town. Cost of community services is a huge piece of it. Open land costs you next to nothing. The troops don't send their kids to school, none of that stuff happens. Commercial land is a good deal because it doesn't demand all personal services that residents does. Residential services, and you can check the figures, the average in the state and the hamster, that every dollar that you get in tax revenue, you spend a dollar and 15 cents. So, please, everybody that is interested, be at the door on the way out tonight, and I'll give you my dollar and you give me your dollar fifteen, but I bet the line won't be very long. We've got many other places in this town where housing is available, many, and we don't need to build this tremendous amount of infrastructure, this is going to require extra community services. You're going to see another policeman, you're going to see another plow truck, you're going to see all these things as you do that. You look, take away a piece of land that has been in the same family since 1900, and he's right, the lawyers say, "We don't care what that woman wanted." That's going like this. Well, we all look in New York a different way. This woman spent a good deal of her life as a state representative, going down to Congress for next to nothing, getting her mileage to help few people in this town. And for those of you who knew her, and met her on the street, she did, don't you? And it was her, I don't know whether it brought naivety or what, if she didn't put restrictions in the deed, but she didn't. But if you look through her paperwork, you'll find that she actually had a little massive plant of her own with a forest management plan on it. She could have sold this land, no problem, in 1995 to a realtor. Probably come up with better than $113,000. On purpose, she subdivided out a couple of pieces of land to build houses. That was a development she agreed with. And she gave the first piece of town, looked at town with the wording of the Warren apple, she felt was the handshake, obviously naive. The wording of the Warren apple was recreational uses and municipal uses. So, I've been in touch with family members, cousins and nieces, nephews, passionate about their aunt's values and feelings, and I'm sure through letters of the editor, nothing could be heard about that. But for those of you that are here tonight, thank you for coming. And for those of you who I walked through on your backyards the other day on Saturday, walked, walked Nelson's old boy's backyards, and you know what's going to happen to that area property, something that has just been placed. So, from the Conservation Commission's point of view, and from being a valued, honored friend of the Eaton family, this is my statement. Thank you.
We will, thank you for sharing that. We will give back, as far as the number on the committee, we'll have it posted. But I also, in all fairness, I believe Mr., is it Bonbachi? Is he here tonight? You are. Okay, is there anything, in all fairness, is there anything that you would like to share?
Yeah, so, thank you. So, I mean, we put together a proposal just based off of the master plan that was available online. We...
You're standing up a little?
Sure. So, we put together the proposal that was presented based off of the master plan, which is available online. There is a need for housing addressed in the master plan along with the community forest. That was the way we addressed dividing up the parcel. I did, you know, speak to the, you know, reporter at the record, I'm sure a lot of you guys kind of read the article. Our intention is to put something there that people would want, which is why it was created under the, under the direction of what the master plan specified. That was really the intent, carving off a longer portion of it to be recreational space along with open public space for the public to enjoy, and then also attempting to address the housing shortage, which is going on in the town. I understand that the growth hasn't been, you know, huge over the last 60 years, but a lot of it is because a lot of the houses that are being built aren't full-time residences. I think there's probably more growth going on in the backyard than the numbers show just by, you know, pure residents. And that was one of the things that we believe in. We own a number of units in town. There's a big demand for apartments, there's wait lists, there aren't enough apartments for people to live in, there aren't enough apartments for the average workforce. We're constantly always having wait lists for the units we do have, and there is a demand in the vicinity for newer apartment buildings that are safe for families and children, which was one of the things that we were trying to address with some of the infringement. 16% coverage, which is the 16 acres over 100, I mean, that's, that's, that's well below a lot of building restrictions and a lot of, a lot of bounds. Most of the time, you go up to 50% on a lot of parcels. So, we kept it low on purpose because we didn't want to overpack the area, but we definitely want to put something there that benefits the town. Our intention isn't to put something there that doesn't benefit the town.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you sharing. So, we will, we'll get that up on the... Bruce? So we will, we'll get that up on the, on the, Bruce?
I, I spoke a lot to the meeting here, and without any concern, I think it was a jump to gun situation on whoever's, first, because the amount of house lots that are available trans from the suite, private streams, they got forty-five house lots. The Greenland property's got fifty house lots. Uh, in Mount Airus, that eleven. The Dodge Ford's got a couple. Other one is David McCulley, he's got twelve lots available. So there's plenty of housing availability on that map. I also didn't think you guys did a very good job looking into it. To give you an example, when it was constructed up there or purchased, the lawyers built a road up in there, and right away, once you got a piece of property that's talented, you didn't mention that at all. You don't even know a lot of what's going on at some point. So I think it's wrong. I think that the article I read in the paper on it as a contractor, I think you don't understand, you haven't read what's going on, but that is zone R1. Okay? You can't put in those storage units and different things like that, that you can't do that. It's not zoned for that type of stuff. So what are you coming up with? The other part of it is you don't have the water pressure in it, being able to take care of what you've got. Your article you put in the paper is not a very good article to be able to figure on what you're gonna do as a community. The other part is, I agree with the fact that you have a committee. You, it's very close to town meeting, and you shouldn't be jumping the dump. Get your ten people together, come back with some concepts and some ideas pertaining to what you're dealing with. Look at it and see what you're gonna do after you get ten people to get together to make some kind of rational decisions on what you're talking about. But you also can take, as a community, take only twenty-five people, put an article on it that says that you can use this property for the same thing Stephanie wanted for it. It certainly wasn't very good advice when you got from some attorney, how to protect the town entirely. All you gotta do is put twenty-five signatures together and put an article on it to make it still become a piece of property that was kept by the town, used for recreational purposes or something like that. I don't think there are things that the town has that, if you wanted to have dogs, like if you were dog back, like, that is animal back. You got, there's a lot of them abusing, things that, and should retain them. As I said, I think it's a perfect location to, in years to come, beyond my lifetime. If you put something on here that's gonna have solar, it's gonna be beautiful, hang for anything that you put in there for solar, and it ain't never long before you guys are gonna drive a electric car, so I'll tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next on the agenda is the North Country.
Jerry, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
This is my first left meeting, so bear with me. I just wanna know, I, thank you, thank you, everyone. I just wanna know if it takes twenty-five people to sign a piece of paper that urges the voters to save that land for what Stephanie and Spirit at least wanted it to be for our town? Why couldn't we, if we have twenty-five people here, why couldn't we sign that petition now to get it on the article? Because, because I'm thinking the meeting is coming up soon. Is that something we can do?
It has to be drafted properly.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna rush it for this town meeting. I mean, this, this is a very serious issue, and I think the other could hold true too. There could be twenty-five voters that actually said, "We want to develop." So I think we need to get our committee together that, just to flush this out.
Can we count on you people not putting it on here or whatever?
There's no way we can.
I'm just asking, are you sure you're gonna commit yourself as a group up front and say if you're not gonna put it on here, we'll be selling the property?
We wouldn't pull fast one, no.
Here you go. Now we got two more to commit.
Okay.
Hopefully I'm bringing it on, put more in there, selling it anytime soon.
No, I don't believe it's for sale right now. I think the people ought to have a little more input on what happens to this piece property.
If you guys are comfortable, we can create the committee tonight and give them a purpose, or do you want to show on it?
I, well, we can create it, but I think then we want their input, who would like to be on it, and then kind of...
We can create it, but we should probably have a, a mission for the committee. So should we wait till the next meeting and...
Let's, let's talk about that.
Come up with a mission of what we would, you know, like to see.
Well, in fairness to the people who live on South Street, they should have a say in what goes on with this rather than just the voters. You know what I'm saying? Have the committee that you can form with voters.
I think it should be a good cross-section of the community, not just the voters. They should certainly be represented on that.
Any, you know, taxpayers up there?
Were you okay with that?
Yeah.
You'll be hearing more, I mean, check the website too. Jim?
What kind of housing development have a plan to put up there? Is it gonna be a welfare recipient or anybody of old age, or what the hell are they gonna be?
Don't, we'll have Mr. Bonbachi.
So, so it wasn't really meant to be any restrictions, so the goal would be a condo community, so that we can provide newer construction that's at a affordable price for a lot of people that are looking to move into the area, and then also some apartment buildings, because again, there's, there's a shortage of apartment rentals in the town, which is something that we're very, very close to, just because we, we do have a number of units in the area.
It's not gonna end up being a low income town, is it?
Nope, there's, there's no, no, no voucher, no subsidy, that is not part of the plan. It's meant to be, it's meant to be affordable in terms of like not overpriced, not, you know, driving people out of the area, but it's definitely not meant to be subsidized.
If I could just add, one of the benefits of the town actually owning the parcel and then doing, looking at some potential options, is that it really does, the, the town in the driver's seat as far as dictating what kind of development they want by putting any kind of restrictions on it. Whereas our zoning is pretty limited in, in Littleton, so if a development comes into another spot, if the town is very limited in what it could ask for restrict, for example, you know, you could put low-income housing anywhere in the zone, of course, whereas, like I said, something like this, the town retains the ability to demand, you know, what kind of lighting or sidewalks or, you know, conservation land, waterways, sewer connections, water, electricity, you just get all the control.
Thank you. You wanna go into the next, the North Country Solid Waste landfill?
Yeah. So we wanna take care of Karen, if you have this, Karen, she's that couple of hours.
Sorry, Karen. Yeah, that's... So what you need is approval on investment policy.
Correct. With investment policy, the only thing that changed on it was the dates. The investment policy, the only thing that changed on it was the dates, I sent it to Paul New. So it basically goes over what type of banks or financial institutions that can be considered authorized depositories, goes over what the different funds are that the treasurer can put into this investment. It goes over, again, what's authorized, what type of, they have to follow under. So it's just a guidance, and it's something that's required to be looked at on a yearly basis. So I'm hoping that you'll go ahead and approve this, and it will last until twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I did have a couple of questions. On page one, it says RSA forty-one twenty-nine gives the duly elected treasurer, duly elected.
Right now, we have an appointed one.
Okay. Should that be changed then, duly appointed treasurer?
We might wanna change that to duly elected or appointed.
Okay.
Then we're covering both bases. If anything happened that the treasurer wasn't elected, and you appointed one at some point, it's one, one change now or...
Okay. All right, and then on page two, although it's not available, page two, it says, "The board of selectmen hereby authorizes investment of excess and other funds in accordance with, and it gives the RSAs." Where are we investing now?
Right now, we have our investments at Bank New Hampshire. And it's, the investments under this policy are only the town, not trustee, the town by us.
Okay. Okay, good. Then on, I think it's page three, it says, "Authorized depositories. Town Littleton and all revenue received by the town of Littleton to the treasurer, the treasurer shall deposit said funds with one or both of the following institutions." So, and then there's a list, but it says with one or both, there's more than two. They are, so should it say more, more than two?
How about one or more?
One or more, okay, I feel better with that. Okay, and then the treasurer, on an annual basis, shall obtain a statement of condition from each bank for the treasure deposits or invest funds. Have we been getting these?
We've been getting those. Actually, we get a statement on a, almost daily basis
Okay.
of our funds, the big funds that we have with banks and...
Okay, good, that's, that's all I have. Do you, Roger, Jen, anything? So then...
I'll make a motion that we approve the investment policy amendment. One second.
Can you all, if you say aye?
Aye.
Ready, Karen?
I think you need to check with your bonding company first.
What'd you say, Bruce?
I think you need to check with your bonding company first. The treasurers are required under law in one, and before you change any policies, you should be checking with the bonding companies, the bond town, and the treasurer, and anybody else, before you make any decisions.
We can check that, I mean, basically, it's just the date, but it's just a change in very minute verbiage.
But that makes any difference. Verbiage is what I'm trying to get at, and what you're doing. You check with your bonding company before you go in vote. That's what you do, that's what a bond...
Financial institutions that we usually put funds in, that we do put funds in, end up being governed by the New Hampshire state, and they have to follow certain rules, and they are bonded institutions.
I didn't say that. It's required by law to be bonded in the state, in, in every treasurer, in every town.
She is bonded.
And she is bonded, but before you change any wording on what you do, you check with the bonding company before you make any changes to make sure it's done correctly.
We will.
You not, not will, they wanna own it, so what I'm saying, if you do it...
This is a, a policy that's been in effect and approved by the auditors for over ten years, and needs to be looked at annually.
But one meeting isn't gonna make a difference. You go back and check with the bonding company to make sure it's correct as to what you're doing and wording to use. That's what you ask for, is to do it that way.
What are the consequences if we don't go down it tonight, Karen?
Nothing.
Okay, so let's bring it back to the next meeting, and we'll check with our bonding and make sure it's better. All right, no, no big deal, as long as there are no consequences.
Yeah, nothing.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, so the next, is the authorize the treasurer to transfer sewer fund accounts to the new bank?
Yes. I have here, and I just picked them up, some documents from our account that we have, and one is a residual replacement account. For the last year, we've been charged fees, and our fees are more than what our interest is. So I say it's time to authorize the town manager and the treasurer to move the funds into a financial institution that's gonna pay us a little bit of money. I know it's not a big account, and we're looking at thirty-five thousand, but when we're losing two hundred and ninety-one dollars and only gaining a hundred and seventy-six, it's time to look at something else. Then we have a sewer connection account, similar situation. It is a small amount, it's about five thousand eight hundred dollars, but we're losing a little bit of money on that. We hadn't been charged fees until December twenty nineteen, and we started being charged fees.
Did you get a reason for it?
At that time, we did, because of the economic and the fact that it costs money to use to set these funds. We have, between the trustee account and our main account, a quite sizable amount, just in the trustee funds, there's over, and I'm thinking off the top of my head, between school and private trust with the cemeteries and the town trust, it's over three million dollars. And then we have our, our regular general fund checking there, and then we have these smaller funds. We're paying fees on these smaller funds, and if we are, let's move them somewhere where we're not paying the fees. We also have a general fund operating small account of three thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, and that one's also seeing fees on it, costing us a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. It's just crazy. So I'm asking for the selectmen to make motion, I wrote a motion on the bottom, if they would authorize, I think you've got two copies there, sorry.
Have you done any research yet, Karen, as far as with the other financial institutions, or were you waiting for a response?
Waiting for response. That's why I tried to write this, so that any time from here on out, that it's noticed that we're being charged fees and we're not gaining in our accounts, that you authorize the town manager and the treasurer, and I didn't put names with them, to move any non-trustee related funds into any local banks that fit the authorized depositories at any time. And the authorized depositories are described in the investment policy.
Listen. But first of all, you better be looking at, you said you got three million dollars. You've got only insured over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, no matter what. So you should be looking at possibly dividing that up, talking with some banks as to how you insure yourself, because these banks can go down in two, flight, nothing, flat, right at the present time, so you're not doing it correctly.
The trustees have that in their accounts.
That's what I'm talking about, whoever's got the accounts, whether it be doggone sure you're only insuring a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and you turn around and you put your investments in for protection. The other thing is, you can't add the town manager, he's not bonded. You have to go with the treasurer, who has bonded all those things on it too, but the town manager's not bonded.
The reason why I added the town manager as part of this, is we should have two people involved in any type of...
You have a treasurer and you have an assistant treasurer too.
We're the deputy treasurer.
I mean, you're deputy treasurer, so they can take care of it, if you don't have the town manager who's not bonded, those people are bonded.
I don't mind either way, but just to correction, I am bonded.
You are bonded?
Yes.
I can't remember, I...
Maybe ten million dollars.
I can get you that information.
You can give it.
I'm also bonded too. I'm also bonded too, and I can get you that information.
Well, the town one's bonded, but a lot of different jobs and different things up there. It's our bond. But I don't recommend that the town manager is the guy that can do and type of stuff on. I think you should have a treasurer and assistant treasurer. They're the people who should be handling that part. And, but you can be protecting yourselves as far as our community's concerns. Any one of these planning institutions that goes down in two, they have a little thing on it. Likewise, I think it was the annual state bank, John Mancus, who was the fittest bank in the state of New Hampshire, and they went down to the few years. Why wouldn't you look at it and protect yourself?
I mean, there is a thing where...
I don't know, I can't think of it.
I haven't seen, I mean, I haven't seen what the funds are in, but again, it's probably either an ICS or the collateralized.
They are collateralized.
But they're protected.
They're protected in ways where, I think deposits happen in, in multiple institutions so that there isn't any additional exposure beyond what Bruce is alluding to, but at the IC.
Insurance.
So I don't need an answer tonight. If you want to wait till the next meeting, that's fine. If you want me to investigate further on the town manager or deputy treasurer, I can do that too. But I definitely feel there needs to be two people at bond.
I agree.
Can you investigate all the rates that you could find from another? You're waiting for some of that information correct? Be interested to see that.
Be pretty bad with the public.
Karen? Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
And I'm not sure this will be Karen's last meeting, and I'm really, you know, the thinker for eighteen years of service as our finance director. Um, we'll have a new finance director to introduce to an upcoming meeting. You know, Karen has been available to help make sure we have a smooth transition, but just want to thank Karen.
I just do my job as best as I can.
Well, thank you. Service. Um, so the next, I guess it's okay to move on now to the North Country Solid Waste Landfill topic? Am I skipping ahead and doing...
Yeah, that's okay. There was a petition, we received a petition warrant article.
Yeah. Can we just say that there is a petition warrant article? There are well over twenty-five signatures, I believe.
May I have a view of the warrant article?
Sure.
This warrant article speaks for itself. This warrant article speaks for itself. People in this audience have not seen it yet, but I'm happy to share it with the press. It's a petition warrant article that I have submitted to the Littleton Town Offices two weeks ago with more than enough registered voters who signed to support it. I will read the last three paragraphs of my petition warrant article. Whereas the people of the Town of Littleton over these past decades have made substantial investments in our community's health and sustainability, including recognizing and supporting the economic importance of the Amunicic River, which runs right through our center. Therefore, the Town of Littleton resolves that the new landfill proposed relocated in neighboring Dalton is not compatible with our vision for the protection of the Amunicic River and its watershed, our shared groundwater, our shared roadways, our regional environment, or the tourism businesses we depend on for our economic future. We, the voters of the Town of Littleton, hereby resolve to oppose New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services approval of any application for another commercial landfill to be built in the North Country. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Questions, um, comments, anyone?
I'm not going to debate you because it's in a different town, I'm a town owner.
Okay, that would...
We can't, we can't vote on something in our town to do something that's going to be none of a different town. We can't do that.
I'm not very equipped to work it out. We're in a...
One of the things that has come up is, I know, you can only have so many committees, but to put together, again, another group, because Margie Senwar also contacted us and said that she, she would be willing to be a part of that. So if we could get a group together that would, because the, is, trash is going to go away, and I, and I think we have to come up with something that's going to be sustainable.
Well, we could look into more other, other places such as in Success, or even Turnkey. And I, I'm sorry about, I'll argue that it has, it has a huge effect on Littleton in the sense that, I know that, but the wetlands complex that the D E S has now wants twenty-six areas worked on because of the effect on the streams and the wetlands complex of the Alderbrook that then flows into the Amunicic River. And our river, and our riverwalk gives us so much economic benefit to this town. So I, I'm sorry, but I, maybe legally it doesn't apply, but I, I think it does.
So would we have enough interest to form a North Country Solid Waste Landfill Committee?
I didn't say another town. I said approval of any application for another commercial landfill to be built in the North Country. I have nothing to do with definite or at all, but in the North Country.
All right.
So I, I beg to differ.
You know, just say like, you know, when you're thinking about what you might have the mission to be, uh, because we, we at the town, as far as our own transfer station, you know, kind of game to this out is like, what is the additional cost going to be? Or was our solution to, uh, transfer station closed? But maybe, maybe you could also just help us explore that further. For, what are the long-range options? What are we going to be looking at? Is there some kind of ideal participation to put Littleton to play a role in that?
I also think your point of trash not going away is valid, not a problem, but from what I'm familiar, it's not even just going to be our trash, which as, as community member, strictly opposed to.
Good, thank you for sharing that. John?
If I may weigh in, um, I'm John Swan, I live in Dalton. I've been at the heart of this fight against this landfill for a year and a half. And I will just say that the Town of Whitefield last year at its town meeting did vote for the town to oppose the non-binding warrant article to write to the governor to say that they were opposed as a town to the creation of a second landfill in the North Country on the Amunicic River. And I think that's a hard to matter here because the Bethlehem landfill will be closing, uh, whether it's sooner or later. Twenty-twenty-six is when they're scheduled to be done, but their current permit, which was approved in part because of some of what Mr. Borsette said, these inflated nonsensical numbers relative to costs, which don't make any sense. And I think the purpose of this committee should be to examine the alternatives for the Town of Littleton relative to what happens to your waste. And you already have an existing transfer station. All you need to do is point the trucks from going to Bethlehem to Mount Carberry and Success, which is a municipal-owned landfill. It has plenty of capacity. Their current Phase Three-A permit that has been submitted to D E S, not approved yet, gives them more capacity out to twenty-forty-one. And there's no reason why they can't accommodate North Country ways. Town Dalton made a switch last June, and they've already in a head-to-head comparison with what they were spending at N C E S because of lower tipping fees, have saved over a thousand dollars just in that five, six-month period, head-to-head. So it's something that Littleton needs to look into. And, uh, you know, I, I would love to have a conversation with you someday, Mr. Borsette, about where these nonsensical numbers came from that you sent to New Hampshire D E S and in essence stabbed Bethlehem in the back relative to the Stage Six permit, because those numbers don't make any sense. Your infrastructure is already there. All the, all the trucks have to do is go to Success or just further. But I'd be curious to find out what your tipping fees are, because Dalton's paying ninety-seven dollars a ton for demo, and it's only fifty-seven dollars at Mount Carberry and Success. So I think that's what the committee should be looking at.
Yeah, while we make conversation, I would say that the numbers that we have were built on actual numbers that, that we experienced from everything, from our biosolids contract to our trucking fees and anticipated tipping fees. So they're all, they're all based on the science, there's the math that we have for the, for the letter. But I'd love to show you that and see if you've got some, some good insight and ways to shave it down, so.
So is it fair to say that we will, um, look at the mission?
Yeah, I don't know if we want to wait till after, you know, if this petition article has been submitted. Does it make sense to do that now or form it after town meeting? You know, because that may very well, um, change the mission or, um, you require the mission to be changed once the, the vote of the people. So it may be prudent just to wait till after town meeting and then look at what you have commissioned.
You'll make that?
Yeah.
So we will just table that for now, and then...
So may I ask?
It goes on about...
With this petition warrant article?
What did you say, Karen?
It'll still go on?
It'll go on.
It'll go on?
It'll go on the back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I assume that more than twenty-five, which, okay, so it's...
And they're all registered voters, so it's, it's...
Yeah, so once it's, once it's been counted, it's, yeah, it's on no matter whether or not we want, so that's...
Can I just say one thing? All right, just to be upfront about it within the Littleton Conservation Commission is waiting on Mr. Levede's D E S specifically addressing the wetlands issue that just will have a big event on. I see no problem with making town boundaries be a barrier to something as basic as the Conservation Commission's mission to protect wetlands where one conservation commission can't sympathize and empathize with another conservation commission. The letter will specifically avoid anything that has to do with economic-type factors like truck traffic, although I can't imagine when you do the total way one against the other that even if it costs a little more to tip that garbage off that truck, sending up Success, what's it going to cost if you let those hundred trucks taking garbage coming up your Main Street? You're totally tourist-doctored, impacted Main Street again. That's, you can't hardly put a value on that. So I'm sure that would be something that a committee would consider, but I do want everyone to know that a letter will go to the D E S from the Littleton Conservation Commission proposing the wetlands application to this landfill. And in fact, I mean, Bruce is right to a point, but this piece of land that, that Mr. Anderson owns, actually a piece of it is in Littleton.
It's in Littleton.
The same piece comes around the corner, comes over up on the backside of Main Street, the whole Hacks Brook watershed. Again, I know it's difficult to keep up with all these issues that are going on, but I can't stress enough the importance of getting out of the chair and going out to the area and looking at what's going on. Because without doing that, the decision that is made is an incomplete decision.
Thank you, Tom.
Bruce? Uh, he mentioned the Amunicic River. There's two Amunicic rivers in the North Country. Did you know that? Did you know that?
From what I've heard.
The, the name of it, no, that's not the law. Like, it's the Amunicic River that comes in from Brooklyn. This is the name of the Amunicic River. You don't want it down here at the Amunicic River. So when you specify something, you need to be able to tell wherever it is or what it is. Can't just leave an awful thing on where it is.
Well, I think pretty obvious.
Well, it's more than one Amunicic River.
Okay, so the next...
We're talking about a two-point-four-million-dollar project of this beautiful building with a gap over what the Amunicic River. That's the Harvard River District, and it's going to be the second landfill upstream of this road.
So the next, um, topic is the general assessing services, the RFP?
For assessing proposals, uh, creating employee panels to review previous contract and updated requests for proposals. In this case, it was an employee, it was employees who regularly deal with assessing. Uh, this is our second time doing it this way. Uh, the last contract was listed in twenty-fifteen, and the result paid, uh, saving taxpayers about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars over the five-year period. And also, uh, due to the change in where we get statistical, uh, revaluation, we saved about another seventy-five thousand dollars for the revaluation. So the, uh, RFP was reviewed by the Select Board at Brookdale meeting on October nineteenth, uh, both in twenty-fifteen and now, twenty-twenty. The RFP was sent to all certified assessing firms uh, that are listed on the New Hampshire Department of Revenue website, as well as published in the town website. It gets from Municipal Association Classifieds, the county of cities and towns, and town classifieds. Unfortunately, we only received one response. I say unfortunate just because you get a good broad look at the market. But it is our current contractor who meets.
And you're on the place of line.
You're on the line. So really, just to take a look and consider if any motion. We actually were able to reduce the next year budget in assessing based on these figures that we received from them. We've actually increased the amount of time allocated to the office and to gain more service, and I think a pretty good value.
Did you guys have any questions?
Just to be clear, this is not, um, this, this, this contract is different than the last one. The last one included five years of general assessing services and then four years of data collection. And then the last year, uh, which is this year, was the revaluation. And so what we did was we took the, uh, the, the revaluation portion out and the statistical, uh, four-year data collection out. So this is general services and pickups. So they're going to be just, uh, doing the day-to-day assessing, monitoring new construction, uh, permits, you know, current use. It's just the general assessing services.
And then what we mean is, uh, the actual revaluation by the market.
So at that point, we would want to go out to bids specifically for that. And at that time, the board could make the determination, um, if you want to do a statistical analysis, which is cheaper, or you could do a full rebound. Typically, those are going to run in between a statistical, it's going to be sixty, uh, maybe it's about sixty grand. Full rebound is going to be about a hundred-and-fifty grand plus or less. But we also anticipate starting to put money away each year towards that. You know, typically, you're trying to do it in five years unless your sales ratio or coefficient dispersion needs to be too great, and that's what usually the RFP steps in and says, "Time to go, time to do a rebound."
And the RFP was sent to all the companies that are on this list?
Yes.
Yep. And we only received one man?
That's right. I think at this point, it looks like, uh, you know, the current contractor is pretty much solidifying the area. So, uh, I think other firms know that, you know, there's economies of scale and for them to send a, you know, a crew up this far without having other accounts is probably be very expensive, yeah.
So you're looking for a motion to direct you, town manager, to work with the bid or on the execution of the final contract that the D E S just signed?
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
Roger, do you have questions or...
It's our only choice.
Well, I mean, there's always, we always put the option in there. We can reject all bids and go back out to bid. One of the difficult things with that, I would just need to negotiate a month, a month, because the contract, our five-year contract expires on December thirty-first of this year.
Just seems to me like there's been a lot of jumbling of figures in the last three or four years to where all of a sudden the value of town is up like 100 million dollars from what it was. So was it one time a couple of years ago that it backed and jumped it that much?
That's a good question. Yeah, so I think this year alone, I think we wanted probably about $150 million. In fact, you know, something interesting with that is if we look at your updated budget sheet, our previous calculations were based on previous year's assessment. That reduces next year the proposed budget in warrant articles. It's reducing our tax rate by 7.5 cents, and the default about 9.5 cents. So over the past five years, really, I think what you've seen is the constant, the consistent decline in the tax rate, while at the same time you've seen a consistent increase in the property valuations. I think the first assessment, first revaluation, we saw was a market moved, you know, a lot of residential property, commercial and industrial, pretty much were staying the same. What we saw in this last evaluation was really residential moving up, but then also industrial and commercial really significantly increasing. You know, and it's very, assessing is complicated, and it's really driven by the New Hampshire Park revenues, which is their code and rules, which that is driven by the RSA. And so the assessors are held to a pretty high standard as far as how they calculate how values, value shifts, and how they changes. So, you know, I wouldn't call it fudging other numbers. One of the things that's just really is a historical, always a historical backup sale for the past year to maybe three of sales in the community or the area if there's not enough sales in the community itself. But the increase has been very consistent, with the exception of the year that we did the Great River Hydro Pilot. The Great River Hydro Pilot actually moved about, I'd say, somewhere between $162 and $170 million off of the town's assessed value and then exchanged for a raw cash payment. You remember the controversy over that, it was a school statue of the town for that. What that did is really solidify about 25% of the town's tax rate is to be a constant for a period of years. But even with that, and I think if, you know, we hadn't done that deal, we probably would, you know, looking, if you remember, we talked about the goal of being a billion-dollar community. If we, once we had, you know, billion dollars, we're really creating a really solid base of the tax rate. You know, maybe to Bruce's comments earlier, I think we've made good strides in previous years. This year, really taking longer looks at you balancing the valuation with expenses. You can see that in the tax rate, you know, the consistently fine for the past four years. Anyways, so, yeah, it's tough to wrap your mind around how they work, but, you know, unfortunately, it's, we just do confusing. The station could have been a better way, but it's the method they've created, so.
So we do have a motion so far as directing the town manager to work with the bidder on execution of a final contract for the V O S to sign. That motion is on the floor.
Is that a five-year contract again?
It is.
It's...
Yeah. There's one other, I mean, just to, just so you know, there's one other thing that we've looked at over the past several years was the potential to, actually, because Littleton is so big, you know, Carrie brings it up often, like, we're actually kind of a city and towns public, really, and was that we have enough demand that we can potentially hire a full-time assessor, and they would be a town employee. And I've had for real discussions with some of the surrounding communities about doing like we do with our town prosecutor and offering their services to surrounding towns to help alleviate some of the costs to Littleton taxpayers. You know, that will take more planning than time that we have right now. But, you know, it's definitely, I think it would be cost-effective for the taxpayers to look at that down the road.
Five years is a long time. We've got time to look at that, and, you know, in the next year, we, something with five-year contracts.
And, you know, something we could do too is look at the potential for notification exit clauses, so that the contract could be reduced if we're able to come up with a plan before the end of the five-year contract to potentially move in that direction.
But this is going to be done by the end of this month. How many days?
They've been, they've been open to us to do month-to-month if we needed to, so. I know that they'd rather have something solidified, but I do think it's a good deal, but...
Would it cost us longer or more in the long run to go month-to-month until...
We haven't talked terms, so I'm not exactly sure what the difference would be. You could direct me and sure there's an exit clause if you wanted to, but...
Could you like that?
Direct, so the motion, request of motion is to finalize a contract with the bidder. As part of that contract, you could stipulate a desire to add or direct me to make sure that there's an exit clause that benefits the town should be aligned in the contract early. A lot of times, like, for example, with our contract, one of the biggest contracts we have is with utility parks, which is, you know, around 450 per year. That contract has a notification period at the end of each year where we can notify them of a desire to exit at the beginning. So we could look at that kind of approach.
So if we figure out how, I guess if we just extend this one another month, what we would pay, just see if we talk of that way, if we can just figure this out a little bit more. I guess the question is...
Want to change your motion, Chad, or stick with...
I mean, do you guys, I mean, you guys don't want to second the motion? Do you want to draw a motion? Do you want to, you want me to amend that for next, or do you want...
No, I just want a second. I don't, you know, she might want a second.
I guess it's what you guys' flavor is if you want to direct Andrew to go onto a one-year contract versus five, or you want to, you know, sort of look at that. If we look at a month-to-month, we could...
Well, the last time we did the five, Andrew put the five-year contract together, it actually saved the taxpayers over $225,000 during that five-year period, in addition to savings on the cyclical statistical reevaluation, which saved another $75,000. I think the fact that, I mean, I guess it's a double-edged sword. On one hand, they're very familiar with our properties, so it probably, that's a very good thing. On the other hand, we don't want them to think that they're the only choice for us too.
I don't think they know that there's only one bid.
Okay.
I didn't know if I, maybe they'll watch this video then.
I mean, I don't know if they're familiar with our properties. Nobody said it came to my house. You know what I mean?
No. So you're thinking there's more drive-bys, you know?
Yeah. I just know that the tax burden on Sunday, all the people in Littleton right now is not good because of the way things have gone up, that maybe we can, you know, look into things and see if we can help them out some. I was talking to a guy this morning, he's got to take on a lot of big taxes. He's worked in Littleton all his life. He's got a nice house because he keeps it up himself. It's just, it's a tough situation to be in as a select person trying to answer a question for him.
On the side, I would do something else that we could do is just look at the, look in that situation, is look at the tax credits and tax, there's credits and, what's the other one? There's two things that you can do. You know, there's one for income, there's elderly, and then there's different levels. And just make sure that the voters have had a chance to take a look at all available options, because there may be additional tax credits or discounts that the voters could authorize to help. Something else too is there's a state, a lot of people don't know this, there is a state thing called the D P eight form, and that allows people who are under a certain income to file that. The state will actually kick in a portion of their property taxes to help alleviate the burden. But you do that in addition to just look and see what other potential authorizations the voters may want to consider coming.
And I like the figures that you just gave me, Carrie, that's what it saves.
Would it make sense to, either would they do this and reduce their contract? Or, you know, and I know it's a cyclical thing, but, you know, we've almost gone with five-year contracts, but would it make sense to maybe do a two-year contract?
Yeah, I think we could really, really dictate whatever we like. We could do it two-year with no billings or just if anything happens, we can build into it renewable. In fact, I think the last contract that ended in 2016 was with M R I, and that one, from what I understand, was on basically auto-renewals since maybe early 2010s, so.
So can you change the motion to...
Sure. So we had a two-year with possible renewals and built-in escape clause?
Yeah. I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good.
So two-year renewal, escape clause, and renewable. Sorry, yeah. Very good.
So the only other thing we have left, I believe, is just public comments. And hearing none? Are we going into...
Oh, yes, we should. We got the Walter update.
Okay. All right, and it would be under the RSA, let me just see here, let's... So it'd be RSA 91A32D, am I, is that my one?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion, Chad Sterns.
I'll second it. Arthur Olson?
Okay. Carrie Denver? All in favor?
Aye.
Good. So we are going to non-public.
So you want to wait, Adam and I just pick here, the cyclical table we go to.
Sure.
Yes, we'll be quick.